Love it. Today is the 12th day of December. As Ms. Sweets just said, I can't believe it's December 12th already. And I can't believe it's December 12th already. It has flown by. It is nine o'clock. We are here for our regularly scheduled Commissioners' Court meeting from Karnes County. We do have a quorum present, so let's stand for our prayer and pledge and we'll get started.
Father, we thank you for this day and every day that you give us. We ask that you be with our country today and our county as we go about and do your, 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 your will. We ask that you be with all our responders and all that go out and help people these days and try to do good. We ask that you put the spirit of Christmas in everybody as we approach your, the day of the birth. We ask that you name him.
Amen, man.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Item number five this morning, do we have any citizens that have signed up to speak? You have one? Ms. Patton? Patton, you know the rules.
Morning.
Thank you, ma'am. Any others signed up to speak this morning? Very good. Item number six is an acknowledgement. We have quite a few acknowledgements today. The first one on item number six is the annual tax report of taxes collected during the fiscal year 2022-2023, required by Tax Code Section 31.10B. Tammy?
Okay, I'll say that again. Good morning. How's everybody doing? Are y'all all ready for Christmas? I'm not either. On this tax code, 31.10, Section D, it's the annual tax report. For the timeframe of October 1st of 2022 to September 30th of 2023, my office collected $17,538,368.67 in Karnes County MNO tax. For the INS, we collected $4,657.07. And for the road and bridge, we collected $3,581,034.50. For a total of $21,124,062.24. In addition to that, my office collected $2,440 in tax certificate fees, $3,655 in beer license fees, $467.90 in copy fees, $8,614.26 in escrow, $5,975.62 in mobile home escrow, $540 in NSF fees, $16,453.44 in personal penalty fees. That's minus the attorney's portion of that. And $58,157.57 in the VIT tax, which is the vehicle inventory tax fees that the dealers have to pay. And the total of all of that that my office collected for the county was $21,197,932.97.
Very good. Thanks, Tammy. Full-time job.
Yes, and it's going to be even more this year.
Item number seven this morning is an acknowledgement to present the continuing education transcript for the reporting period of January 1st, 2023 through December 31st, 2023, of hours received by Tammy Broadway, Karnes County Tax Assessor Collector. This is a requirement of this office and must be filed annually with the Commissioners' Court. Tammy, we've got that.
This is just an acknowledgement. The Tax Assessors Collects- Collectors Association of Texas tells us that we must file annually with the Commissioners' Court the, the hours that we've received for the, for the year. My total hours that I received for this, for this year was 88 hours. I was supposed to do 20, and I just need to file this with Carol, but I was supposed to acknowledge it with the court.
You did 88?
Mm-hmm.
Quite a few.
There's two more classes I have to take, one in February, one in Mar- I'm sorry, one in April, February and April. Then there's three more classes I need to take, and they're only offered at conferences. So I'll get one in June, one in November, and then one of June of '25, and then I'll be finished.
You're good.
So.
Thank you, Tammy. Good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Item number eight is acknowledgement that the food bank got a donation for $5,000 from Waterbridge NDB Operating LLC. Y'all should have a copy of that check. Five grand is a pretty significant donation to the food bank. So Waterbridge NDB Operating LLC, thank y'all very, very much. This goes a long way to helping out our proved-insecure folks in the county. Item number nine, acknowledge the Karnes County official vote casting for Tammy Broadway, 2024-2025, Karnes County Appraisal District Board of Directors to continue. Tammy, you're good with that? Thumbs up? Yay? All right. Court, do you have any discussion on that? What we do? Item number 10 this morning, acknowledge Mr. John T. Banks of Purdue Brandon Fielder Collins &amp; Mott LLP. Attorneys at Law donated $1,000 for the holiday employee appreciation gathering. Bonnie? Mr. Banks does this every year.
Yes, and we are very appreciative and thank you to Ms. Tammy Broadway for facilitating all of that. So just wanted to acknowledge the court that he did do that again for our holiday appreciation gathering, which is tomorrow. So thank you again to his firm.
Thank you. Item number 11, acknowledge that on October 24th, at the County Library Board Meeting, two new members, Mr. Mike Spiller and Ms. Lisa Cummings, were approved by the board to represent the Karnes City Library. Donna?
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge that Mr. Spiller and Mrs. Cummings were unanimously voted onto the board at the October meeting, and they will all, both serve a two-year term representing the Karnes City Library.
Who, who fell off? Remember?
They just, yeah, they both represented Karnes City also, so. Forget their names, so.
Thank y'all for serving. That's what I didn't really need in the county. Item number 12, acknowledge that a presentation of Karnes County EMS fiscal year into the year report. Mr. Casey Ibram, you're up.
Good morning, Court. I apologize for potential technological difficulties. If maybe they're gonna work. May just have to turn it.
One, two. That's like at my P O receiver.
It's last night. Okay, in the name of, in the essence of time, I'll just go ahead and present it verbally. Apologize for the.
Casey, is it something that you can, that you can send to us in a, in a PDF or a?
I can send a PDF of the slides to you for sure. Absolutely.
Send that to each one of us?
Absolutely. So I will verbally go through just briefly. So we finished the year higher as far as call volume compared to fiscal year '22. Granted, this report for the context of the court is for the operational period of October 1st through September 30th. Reasons being, and those of y'all that have been on a court for some time, I felt that it's prudent to, as one of the third-largest department within the county and the top four revenue maker for the county, I feel that it's prudent to provide transparency to the court and to the public to provide a little bit of insight into our operations as far as call volume, response times, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's the purpose of today's discussion and presentation that I do every single year. So for the entire fiscal year, we've closed the year out with 2,243 patient care reports. That number's a little bit different when you look at calls for service because a call for service may have two or three patients or just one. Most commonly, we have single patient incidences. Throughout the month-by-month trend, we, we ticked up quite a bit towards the end of the fiscal year. Usually within the summer months, we hit our normal average of about 220 calls per month. Our peak, our peak month for the entire fiscal year was in September. We had 250 calls for service for that period of 30 days, or 31 days, rather. The next slide that I have relates to a day-by-day throughout the week and then hour-by-hour throughout the day. So it shows you the busiest times for the, for the entity. On a weekly or a daily basis throughout the week is Thursdays and Fridays. We average about 360 calls on each one of those days throughout the calendar year. And as far as time of day, it never fails between 4:00 PM and 5:00 PM. We, that's our busiest time of the day. So we average busiest is 6:00 PM at 158 for the year. And then eight, or excuse me, 5:00 PM, which is 123 for the year. And generally, those are interfacility transfers going to San Antonio. It's just shift change. Patients usually sit and wait for physician acceptance or at the beds, the call center in San Antonio. And just miraculously, they decide to be accepted around that timeframe. So we obviously get the call for service immediately once they get acceptance. As far as a dispatch complaint, number one dispatch complaint continues to be motor vehicle collision. Makes up about 12% of our total call volume, followed by interfacility transfer as number two, a 10% of our total call volume, and then everything else is broken down, falls being third, and then chest pain being fourth. And then we have a breakdown of each one of our apparatuses. That number as far as apparatus breakdown is, is not as pure as it used to be because we've, we've changed, we changed two different apparatus throughout the last fiscal year because we had one come back from remounting, and we had a new, brand-new unit going through service in the Falls City District, District 3. So the truck-by-truck breakdown isn't as pure as it used to. But all that to say, we monitor that to make sure that, we'll talk about mileages here in a second, that we're trying to be fair and equitable across our entire fleet and not have one truck within a certain service district continue to get hammered, if you will, on call volumes. And we were trying to rotate those assets there to try and accrue, accrue mileage at a fair rate across the board. As far as a breakdown in responses for pickup cities and location types, number one location type being single-family residences, second being hospitals, and then street or highway being number three, and then the rest is pretty small. As far as cities, as I, I mentioned to the court before, when I provide information and breakdown per zip code, as you see on my monthly report, Karnes City is always the highest. And from an annual perspective, it makes up 54% of our total call volume. Note that Karnes City is represented by a zip code, entire zip code of 78118. So whether you're on the cusp of the city limits of Karnes City going towards Salina, the hospital also within our PCR system is represented by 78118, not 78119. So that, that number is a little skewed, if you will, but as we, we've recently changed EPCR platforms that we can actually drill down specifically and provide on a actual interactive heat map that I had in the slides that I'll show you in the future, we can actually see exactly, pinpoint where within the county our calls are actually occurring. So that's pretty neat. We were able to, we were able to do that after this October 1st. We brought in a new platform that ties into the CAD at Dispatch. As far as a breakdown of transport versus refusals, we look at this from a quality assurance standpoint to make sure that we're not, you know, dismissing too many patients or patients are refusing at a higher rate than normal. Rather, our transport volume makes up about 70% of our total calls. We transport somebody to the hospital 70% of the time. Of that breakdown, about 55% are advanced life support calls, and then about 15% of that is basic life support calls. Granted, a paramedic generally is still in the back unless we have, we have a very specific SOP that paramedics can necessarily downgrade or provide a lower level of care within our SOPs, approved by medical direction and our on-duty captain. Because again, if, if we have a BLS provider that can provide adequate care to that provider, there's no need to have a paramedic in the back for those calls. But again, that's only 15% of the time. Our refusal rate, 17%, we were canceled 7.5% of the time, and then the rest were just other dispositions. 911 continues to be our number-one type of service, representing 78%. That's what we're primarily responsible for, as y'all know that. Anybody that calls 911 within the boundary, geographical boundary of Karnes County, we're the authority having jurisdiction for the entire county of Karnes. So that is, will be our number-one priority. But of the remainder, 16%, roughly 20% of that, 19, actually represents interfacility transfers. So from Auto Kaiser and elsewhere, primarily being Auto Kaiser. The rest are mutual aid calls. We go to Live Oak County quite a bit. I would say at minimum on a monthly basis, but it's mostly weekly, if not daily, in some instances because of their staffing challenges. They only have two ambulances for their entire jurisdiction. They don't have a hospital within their jurisdiction as well, so it makes it very difficult for them. So we go out there quite a bit. So when you, when you get the slides, and you probably see this on my monthly report, we have pickup zip codes, as in George West, Three Rivers, sometimes in Nordheim, Yorktown. So our mutual aid partners are the ones that rely upon us heavily in their times of need. As far as destination facility number one, Auto Kaiser, we represent about 36% of our total transport volume. The rest is broken down. University Hospital being second, Conley Memorial being third, Baptist Medical Center in downtown San Antonio, and then Guadalupe Regional Medical Center, and then again, the breakdown continues. Let it be known too, and this is, I'm assuming common knowledge to the court, we transport patients to the appropriate facility at the appropriate time. So I always tell people that ask me in the public, will you take me wherever I need to go? Yes, comma, as long as it's either clinically, as long as it's clinically and operationally feasible and necessary for you at that time, we're gonna take you to the appropriate facility. It may not be exactly where you want to go or have been previously, but if that facility has capabilities that you need at that time, that's where we're gonna take you. And obviously, in the transfer business, we're at the mercy of the accepting physician. So we'll take patients to Corpus, to Victoria, San Antonio, et cetera. Medical versus trauma breakdown, about 67% medical, 30% trauma, and 3% unknown. Generally, those are canceled calls or standbys, et cetera. Get into a little bit of time data, just something from a situational awareness. The median response time, meaning from the time somebody calls 911 to we are on scene at somebody's house, and this is all comers for the entire fiscal year, our median, not average, median response time is seven and a half minutes. So we tried, the goal was to be there in under 10 minutes. And for a county this size, I think that's pretty, pretty fair. Granted, the reasons for running medians and not averages is because of our interfacility transfer volume. Currently, I can't segregate that data, meaning that we have had transfers pending for three and a half hours. So it's really skews my average response time to the point of our average response time looks like 40 minutes for a specific truck because we have two or three hours waiting for a truck to get back from San Antonio, getting that patient from Auto Kaiser and then taking them. So that's why I run that numbers in medians instead of averages. As far as incident time, this is where things, I always compare people, you know, what's your total call volume? Well, it's about 2,400 calls a year, 22 fluctuates. Oh, it's not bad. You did it with three trucks. Yes, comma. Our incident time, our average incident time per truck is anywhere from 80 minutes to 126 minutes. So incident time is from the time that truck is dispatched to the time it goes back into service. And so there's a lot of variables, right? Where are they transporting? Is it locals and not locals? Is it 911? Is it interfacility? Is there a decontamination that's required? All those things go into it. So our trucks are on task anywhere, again, from just an hour and 20 minutes to almost two hours. And that's averaged for throughout the entire fiscal year. So another slide that I started doing a couple of years back was something we refer to as our system response status. This means what's available to the residents right now. So we have status green, which means all three of our ambulances are in service and available, ready to respond. The yellow is one's busy, two are available. Red is two units are assigned, only one's available, and zero is there's nothing available. If somebody calls 911, we're calling for mutual aid, or they're just having to wait until we get a truck available. And what that looks for you is 64% of the time, so 5,760 hours, we had three trucks available. For 29% of the time, or 2,562 hours, we were in a status yellow, meaning we had one unit assigned, two were available. Caveat to that is, we do not accept an interfacility transfer from Auto Kaiser as an agency unless we are in status green. So 29%, almost 30% of the entire fiscal year, we told them, hold on and wait until we get another truck available. Them being good stewards for that patient, they will call and look out for, reach out to other providers, and sometimes they get acceptance, sometimes they don't. And on average, we miss probably about one and a half to two transfers a week out of Auto Kaiser for this exact reason. Because again, we're not gonna sacrifice a level of service to the taxpayers calling 911 to transport somebody who's currently in a hospital, comma. People that are sitting in those beds, majority of the time, up to 80% are also taxpayers, right? So we owe them that service as well, but we have to be fair and equitable with our resources we currently have. Status red, 5% of the year, so 511 hours, we had two units assigned, only one truck was available. And for the magic number of having no ambulances available was representing 2% of the year, which is the highest on, on record since we've been tracking it the last three years, which was 98.75 hours. So for 98 hours, again, this is throughout the entire fiscal year. There was not an ambulance available within Karnes County because of multiple different reasons. And we've had multiple times to where bad wreck, explosion, what have you, will take two patients directly to San Antonio. two patients directly to San Antonio, leaving one, if not zero ambulances within the county. And then those times we'll contact, Gonzalez has been a huge partner for us, their truck in Nixon, um, as well as Wilson County, either in Forbesville and Stockdale, and then, uh, our partners in York County EMS are very reliable too. Live Oak is probably almost always not available and neither is B County because they are very busy, but we have some good partners. Last little bit of operational stuff as far as mileage, um, our trucks are averaging anywhere from our reserve units averaging about 45 miles a day to our highest truck within District One, Medic 914 is averaging 110 miles per day. Um, again, that's all comers. Um, we had again, a lot of moving parts last year with fleet. We had 914 that was just remounted. So it was our newest truck going into fiscal year 23. And then about halfway through in May, we received, uh, the new, uh, Medic 918 through the ARPA funds that's been placed into service in District Three. Um, but all trucks, that being said, all trucks are staying busy, um, anywhere again for total mileage from 34,000 down to 11,000 miles for the entire fiscal year, but knowing that they were only in service for a portion thereof. Billing and collections, so how much money we were billing and what we're collecting, and we're going to have some agenda items coming up here, we'll talk about this, uh, quickly. But, uh, for the entire fiscal year, we billed out $2.1 million. Um, so I generally say our, our billed amount is pretty well matches our budget, and that's just coincidence. It's not a, a magic formula because our budget last year was around 2.3, 2.4 million. Um, so we billed out 2.182, we collected 896,556 dollars for a 41.08% collection rate. Um, I would say anything greater than 35 to 40% is about national average until we get some stuff fixed at the high end of Congress, which we'll talk about. Um, but for the, for the fiscal year, we did very healthy, it was our number one fiscal year as far as revenue that I've been tracking. Um, so our goal was to obviously get as close to even as possible, but knowing that it's almost unattainable because of medical billing the way it is. Uh, we did do some changes this last, end of our last fiscal year, changing vendors in our EPCR system, which will provide a whole bunch of stuff on the front end, but from a billing and collection standpoint piece, it's going to really expedite the out the door, getting those charts completed into the billing company. The sooner that happens, the higher possibility we have of actually being reimbursed at a fair and equitable rate, uh, and not be denied for any and all reasons from insurance carriers. And that's Medicare, Medicaid, all the way down to workman's comp and commercial payers. Currently for fiscal year 24, just for your situational awareness, we're at 90% collection. Granted, we only had one month and we had a really good month. Um, so that number obviously will trend downward, but we're, we're doing good thus far. Another piece of information I wanted to provide is our lights and sirens responses and transports. The common misconception that people have is well, ambulances will always show up with lights and sirens and they will always transport me to the hospital with lights and sirens. False on both ends. Generally speaking, for 911 calls, unless we can very definitively know between what dispatches obtained, information we're getting real time as we're responding, uh, maybe if it's like a healthcare facility, nursing home, et cetera, if it's a benign that we're kind of triaging over the radio, we won't respond lights and sirens. Reasons being your chances of getting into a severe accident increase 20-fold in an ambulance if you have lights and sirens. So the national standard is do not use them. And there are agencies across the United States, both rural and metropolitan, that do not use lights and sirens, period. We're not there yet, but I'm telling you that to know that about 31% of our total responses last year, we did not use lights and sirens to go to. Furthermore, the more interesting and what I feel proud about is in transport side of the house, over 90, 96.1% of our total transports, we did not transport with lights and sirens. Um, so generally speaking, the only time we'll transport lights and sirens is in, we're in rush hour traffic in San Antonio and trying to navigate a freeway, trying to get through an intersection of other, but even again, your, your risk increased so much by doing that. Um, so we try to, obviously we, we're very equipped and capable to stabilize prior to moving, knowing that yes, things can change on the way, but we're not going to use lights and sirens if at all possible. So that was a pretty interesting little fact. Um, the next slide I really, I, I wish I could show, but again, it will, you'll have it in the slides and I'll be able to show you at real time if you want to come by the office, but it's the heat map I alluded to. So we implemented a new system come October 1st of this year, um, that provides real time GPS feedback, turn by turn directions, depending upon what entered into the CAD at sheriff's office. It's just the interface that plugs in on the backend. Um, that comes to us real time. We're actually able to export that data from that application and push it into a heat map to actually show us geographically dots on the map where our calls are occurring, which is something we've never had to be, we were unable to do previously. So we're pretty excited about that, uh, and we'll show you that at, whenever we have that opportunity. Um, some whole blood information, again, those of y'all that have been with us for some time know that we've been carrying whole blood, uh, on our ambulances or in our supervisor's vehicles since March of 2019. Um, changed the game. It truly transformed pre-hospital medicine, brought back an old thing. Um, whole blood was the gold standard all the way up until Vietnam, then the blood banks were like, hey, we can make money on this stuff. We can spin it down. We can make more money on components. And oh, by the way, you're going to give components in one to one to one fashion because well, whole blood was the best. And now we're like, hey, how about we just do that all over again? So, um, since we started in March of 2019, we have touched 136 units of blood, of which this last fiscal year were 35 units of whole blood. Of those 35 units that we touched throughout the fiscal year, and we keep them for 14 days at a time, just for your record, uh, if we don't use them, we exchange them back to the blood center for a new bag of blood. We do not pay for that bag. We're billed for it, but we get credited that amount. So when you see the bills in our department, you see that in and out constantly. Um, of those 35 units of blood that we touched throughout the fiscal year, eight patients were transfused, of which represented five trauma patients to three medical patients. This was the first year we had more trauma patients than medical patients. We usually have been running about a 70%, 30% medical versus trauma. This year was flip flopped. Um, so that's very interesting. It's just epidemiology at its finest. Um, and 0% waste. Proud to report, we have not wasted or, um, hurt or misused or misstored or mistransported a unit of whole blood. Um, so I'm very excited to say that. Uh, whole blood program at Strack is gaining traction. We now have, Carnes County EMS has essentially a full-time seat on a national whole blood academy. That's when people from around the world and across the United States come to San Antonio to learn how to do pre-hospital whole blood. Um, so having a real perspective is crucial. They learned that when they had Colorado come through the doors. Uh, so all your ski rescue guys and gals were like, how, okay, that's great in the city of San Antonio, but how are they doing it out in the boonies? So being able to share that perspective is pretty nice and, and share, share those stories and share the successes. Last but not least, I always like to, um, compliment recognition from the previous year. As y'all are aware, we were, um, given the 2023 Mission Lifeline Silver Status Award through American Heart Association. That's a voluntary process we participate in every single year related to stroke and cardiac care. We were blessed to be able to have, uh, been recognized as silver level or hoping, and of course it's driven upon data, um, and, and prior year's performance, being able to apply for and achieve gold status this upcoming year. Some more to come on that. Um, and then our active participation at Texas EMS Alliance presenting at the emerging leaders, uh, as well as the leadership track had opportunity to participate in multiple panel discussions. So it's good to share again, our perspective and to brag on my, my counterpart over there, Mr. Derek Lapp, our assistant chief, recognized the Texas EMS Leader of the Year for the Texas EMS Alliance. So I know I threw a lot at you. Sorry, my slides did not work, but I'm happy to entertain any questions from the court.
And also the ambulances, we got a makeover on our, on our, not just our ambulances, but all our EMS vehicles.
Yes, we're longer, uh, white, we're transitioning to gray with the orange and blue graphics. And we've all received thus far. Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
Very good, Casey. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good job.
That'll take us into item number 13, and that's going to acknowledge that Senate Bill 2476 and the 88 are regarding the EMS billing rates and out of network insurance regulations. Adopted rates are to be submitted to the Texas Department of Insurance by 12/15/2023. Casey?
Uh, Court, you should have the bill analysis in your packet, uh, and I believe I mentioned it, um, maybe once or twice, not necessarily in court, but in passing to some of y'all. Senate Bill 2476 by Zaffarini, when, it was filed literally three hours before the deadline. Um, and what a bill that could have quite literally killed EMS in the state of Texas, um, turned into be probably one of the biggest, have that conversation, or at least refer them to me, but maybe if they have some specific questions for you. If you get an ambulance bill, and say you have Blue Cross Blue Shield and a commercial payer, um, your bill's going to be let's say $2,000, keep the math simple. Um, of that, Blue Cross and Blue Shield will say, well, of that 2,000, we're only going to agree to pay 1,800. And of that 1,800, we're only going to pay 1,000, and then that leaves at $800 on the table. And with copays and deductibles and everything else, not getting into that, I'm not a billing expert, but I'll tell you the balance billing, um, issue that always comes up is well, $800, who's going to, who's going to eat that bill? Well, generally the provider bills the patient, just like any other hospital or physician. So it's not a new concept. It's, some people say, oh, it's surprise billing, it's balance billing, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so that is essentially the process that has been in effect for forever. The issue is the insurance companies always claim, well, that EMS agency is out of network, that EMS agency is out of network, we don't have a contract with them. Well, little old Carnes County EMS doesn't have the power to go and sit at the table with commercial payers like Humana and Blue Cross and Blue Shield to negotiate a rate, just like physicians and large hospital corporations have. So that's what they cite, making the patient very upset, and the patient obviously turns back and calls our elected officials to say, you need to fix this. And so, uh, the original language of 2476 said, the EMS agencies, specifically municipalities and governments could not balance bill a patient, period, full stop. That was the language and that's what it was filed. And we saw that, ooh, that's not really good. Um, so we had Carnes County Day at the Capitol, as y'all are aware, uh, took advantage of that situation. Some colleagues of ours at Texas EMS Alliance were in the house. Mr. Holzhouser, who is our Texas EMS Alliance lobbyist, was also in house, had a nice conversation. Long story short, we got into that, myself and Derek got into Zaffarini's office and said, hey, this is a problem when you talk about why it's a problem. Granted, I just was a, a face in a name Carnes County, then TMS took over that conversation. But over the next two months, it turned into bringing all of Zaffarini's staff, Senator Hancock's staff, all of the health plans in to say, how can we fix this and get the patients out of the middle? So where we're at today, 2476 says health plans only state, um, state owned and regulated through TDI health plans are required to pay either this, what the U as a municipality or governing body sets, or if you as an entity don't set the rates and we just have our own rates for whatever reason, which would be weird, but most privates do that, those health plans are to pay either your bill charges or 325% of Medicare rate. So I'll say that again, never has this ever been in effect that what you as a commissioner's court set as our rates, the insurance companies are mandated, state regulated plans are mandated to pay those bill charges 100% and the patient does not get a bill. Or if y'all don't have charges set, which we do, um, they're going to pay our bill charges or 325% of Medicare rate. It's unheard of. Granted, it only affects about 20% of our total population of payers. Granted, 20% is 20%.
That's right.
So, um, there's a lot of legwork done by the EMS Alliance, obviously Senator Zaffarini's staff. It was a win for the, the, the agencies in the state of Texas. Um, and again, cooperation and collaboration was key with the health plans. Where it's going to go, it's only in effect until September 30th of 2025. It's very specific because the feds, there's a ground ambulance, uh, um, billing advocacy group that was charged by Congress to look at and opine on ground ambulance billing throughout the United States. They have been a lot of legwork in doing their final recommendations to Congress, and we expect some type of legislation to come down from them within the next two years. Um, that being said, we hope that Texas's Senate Bill 2476 is used as a framework for the feds to hopefully try and do this across all commercial payers, which will be a huge win and take the burden off of the taxpayers to continue to fund a large portion, as I showed you. We billed $2.1 million for our services. We only collected about $900,000. There's a huge disparity in cash. We will never be in a green, but if we can be close to the black as possible, that, that's the hope. Uh, and granted, we're, we're blessed to be subsidized through the taxpayers, whereas private entities, that's why you see so many of them going out of business, and that's why we do inter facility transfers Auto Kaiser, not to make revenue, but to provide a service that used to be covered by private entities and no longer in business because they went bankrupt, quite frankly. So, um, that's 2476 in a nutshell. Um, we're, we're going to talk about our own rates moving forward, um, but I wanted to just kind of set the floor and give you any information on that because it does obviously affect not only what we as an agency do, but obviously y'all as a court do related to setting of rates.
Casey caught that, uh, early on and, and made that, that move to Austin, got in with Zaffarini. This was a huge win. Casey kept me apprised of it though, the whole way through, um, and I offered to, uh, make phone calls to Senator, I have good rapport with her. Uh, but that was a huge win, not only for Carnes County, but for, for EMS as a whole in the state.
Absolutely.
So, great job, Case. Okay, item number 14, uh, discuss approved, disapproved EMS billing rates for calendar year 2024. If approved, new billing rates will be applied for any date of service on slash after January 1, 2024. Case?
All right, Court, so we do this every year. Our, our billing company, Health Claims Plus out of Liberty Texas, we've been in partnership with them since 2015 or so. Um, great partners. Every single year they look at the rates, um, and evaluate based upon current demographics, what our number one payer is, what the reimbursement rates are, uh, poverty level, all those different things go into effect and they make a recommendation to the court. Granted, you as a court always have the opportunity to say, excuse me, yes or no to that. Um, so I had a robust conversation with Mrs. Jolly, who is the, uh, co-owner, uh, of Health Claims Plus, related to specifically 2476 and how that may impact our recommendation to you as a court to see what the best options are. I will tell you, I along with her, and I think you would agree with me, are hesitant to jump rates automatically to 325% of Medicare, just because the health plans could potentially pay up to that. Reasons being, um, just to put it in perspective, if you look at one, um, type of service, let's look at ALS one non-emergency. So our current rate is $732, and that's box. Obviously we have my loaded miles on top of that at currently 20.50, $20.50 a loaded mile. If we were to jump that up to 325% of Medicare, we would go from our current rate of $732 to $1,261. I don't feel that's appropriate because again, as I alluded to the fact, we're, this would, Senate Bill 2476 only impacts about 20% of our patient population. Um, and it's, I quite frankly believe unfair to try and, uh, exploit that 325% option just to try and collect more money. So I think with the, the best way is to maintain a business centered approach, cover our costs while still trying to stay with current, fair and equitable current prices across our type size and blend of EMS providers. So what you have before you today that I'll go through just for transparency for the public is, uh, a rate breakdown. So our current rate for BLS non-emergency is 576. Their recommendation is to go to 585. BLS emergency, current rate of 842, suggested fee of 895. ALS non-emergency, current rate 732, suggested rate 775. ALS one emergency, current rate $1,150, suggested rate $1,265. ALS two, current rate $1,532, suggested rate $1,577. Specialty care transport, current rate $1,956, suggested rate $2,152.60. Lastly, loaded mileage per mile, current rate is $20.50, suggested rate of $21.12. Um, again, uh, I believe these recommendations by Health Claims Plus are fair. I believe they, they're appropriate and again, small comparative to other agencies that I've talked to and what their intentions are. Um, so, seeing any questions related to that, but, um, if we don't change the rates, we're going to just maintain a default to our current fee structure that we approved last year. Um, but it would be my recommendation to approve the suggested fee rates outlined in front of you in red, um, as per Health Claims Plus.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Casey, uh, just for the transparency, the materials, the, the things y'all use other than transport, are those?
So we do something called bundled billing. Um, so there's two, two concepts. You can do box and mileage, which is bundled, which is what we do, or you can do itemized billing. Most healthcare systems and some prehospital agencies do itemized billing, but I'll tell you, it's very cumbersome, and it's very difficult, not only in the front end, but on the back end. And generally, patients always try and negotiate itemized billing, certain things off. So it's generally, there's potential for more revenue, but I feel that it's probably the best and easiest and honestly most appropriate for our purview, to stay with box and mileage. So all the supplies, all the hours for the employee payroll, all that thing, all those things that goes into a call, based upon the level of service we provide, is absorbed and contained within that dollar amount that I stated. And maybe a question for ALS-1 versus ALS-2 and specialty care. ALS, again standing for advanced life support. ALS-1, ALS-2 primarily is what type of care was provided, specific medication. So ALS-2 qualifications is generally two or more medications in either a push bolus dose or infusion continuously for a patient. So generally, on very high acuity sick patients, 911 calls will very seldom hit an ALS-2, but on high acuity interfacility transfers that have multiple infusions hanging, generally those patients qualify for ALS-2. And again, the only difference to that is just the rate of which it's reimbursed. Philosophy on that is, well, you're using more stuff, hence the rate being increased. And specialty care transport is a patient that has qualifying interventions, i.e. they're on a ventilator, they're getting blood products, they are a high-risk obstetrical patient that has some type of high-risk obstetrical monitoring, and they are attended by either in addition to a paramedic within RN or paramedics that have attained postgraduate education on specialty care transport. We have roughly six of our folks already that have international board certifications for critical care. Those, that's the postgraduate education that, if they have a patient meeting those criteria and they have attained that qualifying postgraduate education, we can bill that specialty care transport. It's very specific. The billing company makes sure those qualifications are met, but those are just maybe some questions you had that I rambled on, sorry, I apologize.
Casey, if I may?
Yes, sir.
How did you come up with the increase that you're proposing? I mean, how did you come up with the percentage?
So the, that honestly was a question that I asked for Mrs. Jolly at the Health Claims Plus, and she said, it's based upon previous payer mix data for the previous fiscal year and the increase in commercial, or excuse me, the decrease in commercial payers, but of those commercial payers heavily affected by high deductible plans, is how they came up with those recommendations. As far as like specific dollar amounts, I can't answer that question, unfortunately.
Got you, got you.
But I'm happy to plug you in with the person that came up.
That's not, Casey didn't pull these increases out of his hat.
But a great question, nonetheless.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion from the court?
I'll make the motion to approve item number 14 as presented.
A second.
Okay, you've got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? No, motion carries.
Thank you, Court.
Thank you, Casey.
Almost done. I know I have a lot of agenda.
Two more, two more. Item number 15 is to discuss approved, disapproved, recognizing the position of Associate EMS Medical Director as a full-time FLSA exempt position at the salary currently in the fiscal year 2024 budget. This position will also include all full-time employee benefits. Casey?
Good morning again, Court. So the Associate Medical Director position has been on the radar of the court and the agency for some time. Those of y'all that can recall, we went down this path approximately four years ago with Dr. Craig Manifold, with the intention of transitioning to him as a full-time medical director. Due to his unexpected passing, that was unable to be attained. We've kind of been in limbo ever since. And budgetary conversations with the judges up this current fiscal year and planning for that, I stress the importance of needing to bring that position back. Since that time, we have engaged in multiple different conversations with multiple physicians and physician groups, finally landing on Dr. Salim Razai, who is very interested in this position. Dr. Razai is an emergency physician, board certified emergency physician, and a board certified internal medicine physician out of San Antonio, currently works in Methodist cardiovascular ICU. Also is one of, quite honestly, the leading subject matter expert in free open access medical education for emergency medicine. He has a very large social media and blog and informational presence, if you will, thank you, in that community and highly respected in the emergency medicine world. He is not currently involved with any other prehospital agency. So when I say he is truly going to be our Associate Medical Director, that is true. We have had twice already meetings with him, two of which was concluded by him coming down to take a look at the agency, speak with the crews, kind of get a feel for the land, if you will, to make sure that we both parties are in agreement that this is a path we want to go down. In that conversation, he stressed that when we are able to solidify that relationship, he fully intends to be present in our agency, at our agency, multiple times a month. Obviously, being the biggest key to this whole thing is being available 24/7/365 via phone, to be able to provide online medical control for our crews. Currently, that task is delegated to either auto Kaiser emergency room physician and/or the receiving physician in San Antonio. I will tell you, that's not an ideal situation. We have been needing a, our own emergency physician, Associate Medical Director, to speak to for some time, and Dr. Razai is more than capable and willing to provide that for the budgeted rate of $15,000. So my request is, because of his involvement, active involvement with the agency, participating in training, providing clinical oversight, being on and operating Carnes County EMS equipment and apparatus, I feel that it is prudent and crucial to recognize that position formally as a full-time exempt position to include full-time benefits. Happy to entertain any questions.
I, obviously, I guess most of this court, with the exception of Commissioner Dr. Geisler, when Dr. Manifold was brought on, I was not against Dr. Manifold at all. He, is it Manifold? Manifold?
Manifold.
Manifold, right. Wonderful man, was brilliant, but it was a budgetary hit that I didn't agree with, the amount. And we've settled on the $15,000, which I believe is fair. Dr. Razai, he seems like an incredible man. I know that Casey and Derek and all the EMS group are, this kind of just fell in our lap.
Absolutely.
And it was kind of an answered prayer, really.
Absolutely was.
Is what it is. So I'm 100% in support of this. Y'all have questions for Casey? He can answer.
And I've had multiple conversations with Dr. Saldana, who is currently our medical director. So our intention is bringing Dr. Razai on as a full-time Associate Medical Director with an eventual transition, time exact to be determined, to him being our full-fledged medical director. So we would, instead of having two positions that we have this current fiscal year, we would contain both of them into one. And again, time to be determined, it'll most likely fall within a fiscal year window because it's this most opportunistic decision at that time. But Dr. Saldana fully supports this, bringing on Dr. Razai. He is just as excited as we are, again, because again, he's always been supportive and wants us to have the most real-time oversight and support from somebody we can access 24/7. And Dr. Razai is more than capable and willing to do that for the current.
No shock to Dr. Saldana. He's been involved in the talks throughout all of this, so.
Absolutely.
It's a good thing.
It voted on, when will he start full-time?
It would, so we would still have to satisfy our requirement for posting that position, just like any other employee.
Right.
So no later than the two weeks, I believe, for that. So on or before January 1 is my intention.
And you have the monies in your budget, too?
We do.
For the salary, yes, sir. The next agenda item is to include the budget.
Net will be the benefit.
For the benefits.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve item number 15 as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? No, motion carries. Item number 16, Casey. We'll let you get out of here, is to discuss approved, disapproved line item transfers totaling That's contingency to line items 100-540-2010. That is $1,147.50 on your FICA Medicare. Dash 2020 would be $8,340.96. Health insurance, 2022, $118.80 into life insurance, 2030, $1,614 in retirement, and 2060, $30 unemployment tax for unseen full-time benefits of the Associate EMS Medical Director.
Already at State of Court, the unforeseen nature being that I had no forethought or necessarily ability to predict that we would have a physician that'd be willing to provide this amount of involvement with our agency. So I'll completely own that, and I apologize for omitting that dollar amount, but I'm happy to entertain any questions of discussion we haven't had thus far.
We just, basically, we didn't budget the benefits for the full-time employee. Casey and I talked about this. Contingency fund, hey, this guy fell into our lap. It is a godsend, it is the right thing to do. I did not budget for this benefits package, basically, for the $15,000 Associate Medical Director salary. That's what we're asking for today, is to take that out of contingency to fund the benefits package for the Associate Medical Director.
Judge, generally, that we approve for the line item transfers totaling $11,251.26 from GL100-409-4997. Contingency to line items 100-540-2010, $1,147.50 FICA Medicare. 2020, $8,340.96 health insurance, 2000, number 2022, $118.80 life insurance. Item 2030, $1,614 for retirement, and item 26, $30 unemployment tax for unforeseen full-time benefits for the Associate EMS Medical Director.
I'll second.
Okay, motion in a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed? No, motion carries. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, Court. Thank you for your time.
Item number 17, discuss approved, disapproved, posting all required documents to the Carnes County website as required to include expenditures, Treasury report, agenda, and minutes of Commissioner's Court, utility statements, any other document the court would deem necessary. Mr. Dubnik?
Judge, Court, we had this discussion here not too long ago, and I think it was put off because we didn't know who was gonna put that on the website, or we didn't have an IT person yet. I just think that I've had some comments, people are asking, we talked about being, you know, transparent, well, when are we going to start putting these reports on the website? So that's what I'm asking.
I think that a lot of this is going to, and I agree with you 100%, I think it should all be on there. I think that a lot of this is going to be solved whenever we get the software up and running, Ms. Sweets, correct? And we're close. I know that you and Michelle have had several meetings and tutorials on getting that done. Do we have a timeline?
In January, we have to test it and do both systems with what we're doing now, and then in February, we should go live with it.
February live, so that'll be great, working with Jimmy to include, I know that we can get all like, like your agenda and minutes, Commissioner's Court, Treasurers Report, all of that stuff, any other documents that need to be uploaded to that. Carol can work with Jimmy and Michelle and I.
Fine, I shall make sure we don't forget about it, Judge.
Absolutely. So February, January is a test date, test month, and fully live in February. Yes, ma'am. And yours is on there? Okay. Yeah, I thought it was. So I don't think we need to take any action.
Discussion, Judge.
Good discussion. He has utility bills, utility statements. On the utility bills, will they fall in our, they fall in the monthly bill list, correct? Tom, I can't see you. And so when we post, whenever we post the actual bill list, those utilities will be included in that anyways. Any other discussion? All right, item number 18, discuss approved, disapproved, record retention building for construction and request for construction bid. Record retention building, construction bids to be received by January 8, 2024 at noon. Record retention building bid to be opened January 9, 2024, Commissioner's Court meeting and awarded January 23, 2024, the Commissioner's Court meeting. Commissioner Dubnik?
Judge, Court, I know Judge Hetzke did a lot of work on the last, on this retention building, and seem like we've hit a stone wall all the time. And my concern, I was talking with Ms. Sweets, that some of these records were getting one day closer to something happening to them. I think that either we go out for another architect or advertise for an architect to build that building, the site, using Ms. Sweets and the district clerk as kind of references what they think they would need in that facility, and then go ahead and come back to the court with the design and start from scratch.
The design is not a problem. The problem is, we don't have any local folks that bid on it. And I've stated this before, but there's been a change in the county attorney's office. I asked for them to look into the possibility of Commissioner Rosales and myself being GCs on that, general contractors on it, because right now, we're getting folks from, nobody bids locally, and I think that we've discussed that, people don't want to bid locally because of bonding and insurance requirements and all those things. Well, it is just outrageous to me to have to budget a million dollars for a 3200 square foot, two-story metal building. It has one bathroom and a little sink. That's it. That's it. The shelving we were going to buy from Home Depot to save us money, the plans are drawn, the plans are ready. My question is, legally, can the court be a general contractor to build something like this? It's crazy to even have to budget half a million dollars to do that. It's a slab in a metal building. That's all it is. Spending additional money for another architect to draw something that can only fit on that specific lot size is, I think you're spinning your wheels and wasting money. We have the plans, the plans are drawn. I want to know if we, as the court, can be a general contractor to get this thing built for a fair price. So that's something I would like the county attorney's office to look into quickly and have an answer to us by next court date.
Judge? Go ahead. Back about, I don't know, maybe 18 years ago, when Commissioner Yaur was here, we talked about this building, too, and me and him threw it out there to the court, that me and him would be the GCs on it and take care of, build it, everything for a fraction of the price. Because we skip all the, we skip all the middleman, we get the concrete guys, real simple to do. But the court voted it down then. I don't remember the reason the court voted. Carol, do you remember why? Remember when me and Pete came up and we wanted to be the GCs to this building, and we were going to get it all built for a fraction of the price what it was going to cost? This was, I don't know, maybe 18 years ago, seven years ago, I'm not really sure, but, excuse me? For the building out there, for the records building? You don't remember that? For whatever it was, we can probably look back at the.
Do you think it was a legal reason?
No, I don't, I couldn't be wrong. I can look back, or I can ask Pete why we got shot down on it, but we were willing to do that the same way as the, me and the judge can look it over. It's real simple, we get our concrete guys, we get the rectors, we get the electricians, the plumbers, we skipped the middleman. We saved the county a lot of money.
I think we can save the county $300,000, $500,000.
Easy. So will that, if that goes through, will that allow, will we have to be bonded as a court in order to do that?
That's a question for the legal department. That's what I want to know. What requirements would be put on the court to be the general contractor? There is no doubt in my mind that this has been done hundreds of times in counties across the state of Texas to build facilities for county purposes.
It's kind of the same thing, Judge, I'm sorry. When we knocked down that building back there, like in 2005 or 2008, I can't remember when, we served as our own GCs. When we put the roof over here on that building over here, we served as our own GCs. Anytime that we hire a contractor like that and a court allows it, we're serving as the GCs. We're not hiring a general contractor every time we do something to our buildings. So I believe that we can do it, this is my belief. I don't remember the reason we got shot down the last time, but we did. But I believe we can do it, because we do it every time we hire a contractor. Basically, we're serving as the general contractor.
Agreed 100%.
Judge, could you reach out on the lift serve with Allison and them and find out?
We, I can do that.
I think he would give you.
I'll gladly do that and ask if we can, if the court can serve as a general contractor to build, and I'll get specifics.
And then other judges or courts may have been, can tell you.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. In the meantime, will you look into any legalities that would prevent us? In the meantime, will you look into any legalities that would prevent us from acting as a G C as a court? Good. Any other discussion on item number eighteen?
Thank you, Judge.
No, thank you. Item number nineteen, discuss, approve, disapprove, discuss E C S report findings for Karnes County Annex and what future steps may be recommended to continue project. Mr. Duipnik.
Judge, I know this is a very serious issue or, or a, uh, security issue wise, and a lot of things cannot be said, or should not be said.
No, that's, item number nineteen.
But my question is.
You're on nineteen for the annex.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Annex, annex, item nineteen.
Oh, okay, that one there, Judge, uh, I'm gonna ask that you put that on hold till January. I've talked with the, uh, uh, Mr. Chapman, the jail and the, uh, court and the annex will be ready for presentation in January? Or, or he said it'd be ready then, I asked for him to show up in January.
Great, great.
To do both at the same time.
Yeah, let's be, let's be aware of.
I'm sorry, but anyway.
No, I, I'm, I'm fine with, with Jeff coming down and presenting, but let's be cognizant of, of how much money we're spending with Mr. Chapman's firm.
Yes, and, uh, he did tell me this, he said that the, the, the pismeters that have been installed have, have, are, are dry, there has been no water in them.
Oh, wow.
And I told him, I said, but they, they kind of want to extend those pismeters for a while and see what the winter rains do. But he says they are very, they're, they're recognizing that everybody's told them there is water underneath that building to the northwest corner. Uh, it's been a dry time right now, so.
Sure, it's been extremely.
And they said, I, it's either, he, he mentioned something about, uh, uh, some type of a grout that they put underneath the building during, for the wet areas, or, which would be better than the piles, what they, they were talking about, you know, the.
Yeah, I'll be anxious to hear that, that report in January.
But they'll be here, he'll be here.
We'll do both of them.
He'll be here in January.
Great, 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 great. Item number twenty, discuss slash take possible action, update on courthouse security, recommendations and timeline to implement any recommendations. Mr. Duipnik.
Judge, Court, uh, again, I'm just, uh, I've had some employees ask me what security recommendations have been made. I said, I'm, I'm not, uh, aware of that, I said, I know there's something that works, but I don't know what and, but I think the court, judge, the, some of the employees let me know that it's not being put on the back burner.
I, I agree. Uh, Jimmy and I have, have met with, uh, C S I, they've been out and, uh, we're making a lot of progress. I know that C S I did the stuff at, uh, the new road and bridge, uh, facility. Uh, I'm, they're, they're local guys, I, I know, uh, they know what they're doing. Uh, I like their work a lot. Uh, so, I, we've met with them, we have things in motion, uh, working with C S I for some security measures, uh, at facilities. As far as the, uh, the full-time position, Sheriff, have, are we advertising that for the annex and courthouse? We just don't have anybody applying for that? Okay. I'm sure that it is. Do you have that in, make sure that you, you get that, Bonnie, so you can post that on our full page. Sheriff, get with Bonnie and make sure that that advertisement, uh, goes to her so she can blast it out, uh, and hopefully we can get some traction. Uh, yes, and, uh, Jimmy and I met with, with, uh, C S I and felt like they can handle all of that and we're very comfortable with going with C S I. And whenever everybody came with Sheriff and I, I think Sheriff, Chief, myself, yeah, that group of, of people. Have, have you gone over there with C S I with, uh, not Roger, uh, Carl? Okay.
Yesterday, I, Renee, if you would go by, Bank of Paul City, they installed a door similar to what they're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Did you have a chance to go by there yesterday, Renee?
Let, yeah, let's, uh, let's, let's touch base with that. I, I agree, I feel like that that may have been, been put on the back burner and it does not need to be put on the back burner. I don't want to discuss in open court, a lot of things, but, uh, let, let's start making some of that stuff happen. I'm happy to, uh, if you want to get with Jimmy and, and find out exactly what Jimmy has working with, uh, with Carl, um, it, it, it's all good things, it's very positive things. I'm very excited about a lot of the changes we're making. The back door?
No, it was the, uh, door, like we're calling the matter over there. They had to, they put a door in where they couldn't.
Mm-hmm. Uh, yeah, that, that, that's a, that's an easy, that's an easy fix. It's an easy fix. And, and that's an easy fix, it needs to be done. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Judge. I'm sorry.
Item number twenty-one is our consent agenda. We have reports from our constable precinct one, constable precinct two, constable precinct three and constable precinct four. As a first, thank you, constables, all four of you for getting reports in. We also have our I R T department, J P one, J P two, J P three and J P four, courthouse maintenance, sheriff's office and our, uh, driver's license office. All those reports are listed for you in your consent agenda. If we need to discuss any of those, uh, we can do that on item number twenty-two.
Judge, on item twenty-two, can you just make a comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to commit.
Let's get there first.
Okay, I'm with, we approve the consent agenda presented.
Okay. Motion in the second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed to the consent agenda? No. Item number twenty-two, you want to pull?
I'd like to, the constables.
Comment on the constable?
Yes, sir. I just want to comment on, on constables that they've been out there working. I know Fernando, I, I really want to commend you for what you've been doing. Uh, the, the school thing every morning as well as being out riding around in different areas. It, I've had a lot of people say that just seeing these cars around has made a big difference to a lot of people. They, it kind of is awareness that's out there. So, thank you.
One hundred percent agree.
I would, I would second that. I've heard the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Absolutely. Item number twenty-three, let's have our updates from our commissioners, starting with Commissioner Duipnik.
Uh, basically, uh, I've been working with, uh, the whole month already has been with emergency management, basically. Uh, I do want to say that, uh, there was, uh, everybody knows about the fire the other day.
Fire or explosion or both?
Or explosion, both. I know Judge Hetzke was, Judge Hetzke was out there. I was out in the Pawnee area and I saw the smoke and headed this way. Uh, we stayed there till, I guess I left there about almost quarter to six when, when Charlie Mollick and the fire department finally left. The, I had called the weather service, one of the things I always do is call the weather service to get a, to call a split and a, what the weather's gonna for a twelve-hour, twenty-four-hour period cases. That scene's gonna be that long longer. And I think, did I send you?
You did, but it, it wouldn't let me open it.
It wasn't, anyway, there's a, the plume, which is, it shows a little shade of how the, the smoke was going and, uh, and they sent me a, 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 a video of it, but it, it was just like it headed toward, toward down, toward the school and then slowly took a right and, and just dismissed the school altogether. I had called T C Q to come in, they did air, air quality checks, everything was good around the school in the area. Uh, Conoco Phillips did a great job maintaining what they had to do. And I want to commend the sheriff's office, the E M S, everybody that showed up out there.
Fire department, we're all there.
Yeah, to, uh, that responded, we all worked together and did well. And I've got a report for you, Judge.
Pretty scary, that's pretty scary, but, you know.
The thing was nine hundred sixty-nine feet from Stripes and one and a half miles from the school.
Yep.
Did they determine what's going?
Uh, he'll have a report on that, I think suspec- suspected vapor in today.
Vapor, yeah. But other than that, uh, that's all I had. Other than I met with, uh, Jay DeLeanni, he's the new, new, uh, uh, Texas Division Emergency Management Representative for our district.
Good, I'll, I'll be anxious to meet him.
Yeah, he, he wants to meet with you.
Good.
Thank you. Oh, and by the way, uh, uh, the L A P C, we're gonna meet in February, Judge, here in, in Corn City and, uh, I don't know what happened, but, uh, Atascosa County, uh, fire marshal and, uh, E M S, emergency manager guy no longer were associated with there, so. Uh, and Judge, maybe next year in the budget year, we need to be looking at possibly, uh, having a fire marshal on, on staff. Just a comment that we might, it may be an advantage to us for the future, just a comment. Oh, yeah, it was also, we're gonna have a heater, heater drive.
Good.
And blankets.
The fans were, were a great success. Thank you, Shelby, for heading that up.
But, but, but we need heaters, we're gonna need blankets. And the Lions Club is working with that pretty strong, uh, and I think Rotary Clubs helps you that too. But I think whether it's, we could use more heaters and, uh, and blankets.
Great, 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 great. Commissioner Lissy, precinct two.
First of all, I'd like to thank all of our county employees again for all the work that they do. I'd like to commend Sheldon, Commissioner Duipnik, for all the work he does with emergency management. Greg's got, spends a lot of time doing it. I've got on, uh, County Road one ninety-four, they're, uh, doing the drainage work, we're continuing, working on the design of the roads and drainage and hops them. And, uh, we're continuing on Road two twenty-nine with the colors and drainage and, uh, talked a lot of citizens, we had calls, again with trash and, uh, different things on the roads. And I would like to congratulate, congratulate the Paul City football team for making it to the city finals this year. They had a very successful year. And hope everyone has a wonderful Christmas. Merry Christmas, and that's it.
Hey, Commissioner Rosales, precinct three.
Well, I'd like to thank, uh, Road and Bridge for always doing a good job. I've been working, uh, with our engineer head-to-head on these county roads, making sure that they're taken care of as much as possible, depending on the weather. Also had a problem on County Road two twenty-three. I went and inspected it, evaluated it myself, called our engineer, within thirty minutes he was out there. Within an hour, he had an evaluation for me. I called the constituents and they're very happy with the, the timeframe that we gave them on repairs. Also, met with a few pe- a few different people, like always, about county issues, uh, resolved as many as possible on myself, made the calls of the ones I couldn't answer, made calls to answer them correctly. Also been checking on the auditor's building. Yesterday, I spent about thirty, forty minutes with the guys there. The auditor's building is going up great, electrical looks good, building looks good, the structure looks good, everything looks good. The guys are, work very, very hard, they're, they're always busy when I get there. That's about all I got.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great. Commissioner Giesler, precinct four.
So, most of my, uh, center around Road and Bridges, um, I, the progress on Houston Street is, is coming along nicely, it's really looking good out there, so thank, thank you guys for the hard work. Um, I did get a call from a constituent concerning County Road one twenty-five, um, after y'all paved it. He was extremely, um, pleased with the work that was done out there and thanked us profusely as a county for, for all he, all, all that work done out there. He was very grateful. Um, I'd also like to thank Fernando, um, Constable Reals, for, for putting out the report that he does. It's very detailed and very, very much appreciated. Thank you, and thank you for, for working, putting out the effort that you're putting in. That's really all of that, Judge.
Thank you. Next, we'll have item number twenty-four, which is our report from our tax assessor collector, our county auditor and county treasurer. Tammy, you're up.
Good morning again. The tax assessors, the taxes that we collected and for the month of November, the current month to date for the M and O was one million, three hundred fifty-seven thousand, six hundred thirty-one dollars and forty-four cents. The current year to date for the M and O was one million, nine hundred six thousand, seven hundred two dollars and forty-one cents with eight point seven one percent collected. Last year, at the same time, it was nine percent collected, so we're down point two nine percent. When I left the office this morning, it was thirteen point six seven percent collected. On delinquent month to date, it's five thousand, seven hundred eighteen dollars and twenty-four cents. The delinquent year to date is sixteen thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars and fourteen cents with three point three eight percent collected. On the I N S, the delinquent month to date was seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. The delinquent year to date was one hundred twenty-four dollars and eleven cents with point eight two percent collected. On the Road and Bridge, your current month to date was two hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. The current year to date was three hundred seven thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-three cents with eight point seven zero percent collected. The delinquent month to date was one thousand, one hundred fifty-four dollars and seventeen cents. The delinquent year to date was three thousand, two hundred sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents with three point four seven percent collected. We have lots of mail coming in, so we're very busy.
She's also, uh, got in your packets for you the combined top fifty taxpayers.
I went ahead and included the top fifties just for y'all to look at it, to see how we're doing with the top, uh, taxpayers that are paying the M and O. The twenty-ninth top person has already paid their taxes, the thirty-seventh person, the forty-second, usually your top three, the, which are the big ones, or the, I'm sorry.
Oil and gas.
Yeah, the top five are. They usually pay like the end of, last year was the end of December, I was kind of surprised. Usually by the end of January, they pay them those big, like three million dollar checks are usually postmarked at January thirty-one, we get them like the first week of February, but last year, we got them in December.
Paid it early.
I was really shocked. But usually, I just included that so that y'all would see where we're standing on who's paid and who hasn't paid.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Brian. Tom?
All right, Court, y'all should have a copy of my report that I sent in last week. So, for the first two months, we're looking good. We're about seven and a half percent under on our expenses for the general fund. Overall, the funds are very healthy. Our interest rate still is doing very well for our investments, five point five eight percent. I mean, we can't beat that. We did get, uh, three draws in from C T I F last month, the month of November, we got one million, seven hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars and fifty-two cents. We have three more draws right now, approved through the end of October of two million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, four oh two eighty-three. We're just waiting for the state to fund us on that. As far as non-court bills, which is on the last page of my packet, the total amount that we paid out was nine million, eight hundred twenty-four thousand, four ninety-five, ninety-two, which the majority of that was G O. As we always do every month, it's a pass-through, was eight million, seven sixty-two, one thirty-seven forty-four. We had two payrolls, plus we had an election payroll of ten thousand, seven eighty-seven oh one. And then utility bills, as referred to earlier, were fifty-one thousand, eight ninety-seven twelve, which is on the last column of the report.
Good, thank you. Nida?
Oh, I'm sorry, Judge, the, our investments, sorry, bye. Okay, our investments at the end of October, I'm sorry, November, were seventy-eight million, three hundred ninety-four thousand, nine eighty-seven nineteen.
Thank you.
Balance as of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, eighty-one million, fifty-two thousand, four hundred ten dollars and seventy-four cents. Receipts for the month of November, twenty twenty-three, twenty-six million, five hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred sixty dollars and seventeen cents. Disbursements for the same time period, twenty-five million, five hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents. For an ending balance as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, eighty-one million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, five hundred forty dollars and fifty-four cents.
Great, thank you. My item number twenty-five, uh, action on the Treasury Report.
We approve the Treasury Report presentation.
Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Anybody opposed to that? Thank you, guys. Item number twenty-six, discussions slash acknowledgement of personnel changes. This is all departments and all across the county. Uh, quick note, don't forget about the employee appreciation, uh, tomorrow at, uh, Knights Columbus Hall at eight eleven. appreciation, uh, tomorrow at, uh, night Columbus Hall at eight eleven. Okay, uh, also, we have on our employment report, uh, we do have a new patrol deputy, a new maintenance tech three position in Road and Bridge, we've got a new jailer and another new patrol deputy, so, we did lose a jailer, we did lose a patrol deputy and, uh, we lost somebody in our maintenance department, uh, no retirements, we're currently still hiring sheriff patrol deputies, as well as like we talked about on, uh, item number twenty, I believe, uh, we are hiring for a courthouse security, uh, not just courthouse, but it'd be courthouse and, uh, the annex building, so, uh, get those positions so we can get those posted on ours, uh. Happy work anniversary, Bonnie said make sure that you announce work anniversary, Donna Ermas, uh, do you want me to tell the hire date? Do you want me to tell your hire date? No? Go ahead, she says, twelve one nineteen ninety-nine, Donna's been here for a long time, uh, Noble Gilchrist's been here, Dan, Daniel Slyas, know that guy, Wayne Giesler, Christina Torres, Moses Gonzalez, Desiree Evans and Melissa Thadron, Melissa's been here for a long time too. So, happy anniversary to y'all, those folks, happy birthday to our employees in December, uh, Beth, over in Elections, Eddie's our Constable Precinct One, Monica Torres in Road and Bridge, Alicia Cruz, uh, over in Rungy Library, uh, Gabe Gutierrez, Ronald Stoli, uh, Jennifer Dillingham, Jennifer Kale, Donna Bustelman, Esther Cortez, Rachel Garcia, Benedict Mitchell Gamba, Vernon Wheeler, Letitia Johnson, Lauren Liska, Eric Lap, Kelly Askamia, Sylvia Peña, Alma Lopez and Holly Teichman, happy birthday to those folks. Item number twenty-seven, payment of bills.
Right, Court, the total bills for tech are one million, two hundred sixty-seven thousand, two thirty-nine oh nine, uh, which, um, Road and Bridge had eight hundred ninety-three thousand, seventy-four dollars, eight cents, and Road and Bridge special was one ninety-one, one thirty-five, twelve, a larger amount for Road and Bridge, there was two storage tanks that were on back order, we finally received them, they were paid out of this year's budget, we moved those funds, um, and that's about it, everything else is on the norm, um, I do want to let Court know, we do have outside auditors coming next Wednesday, Thursday and Friday to do our fiscal twenty-three audits, y'all may be getting calls from auditors, but that's it, nothing else on the bills.
Make the motion to approve payment of the bills as presented.
Okay, all those in favor, right hand, are you opposed? No? Okay, for folks in the media world out there and for the court and everybody here, acknowledge Commissioners' Court will meet on December twenty-seventh, that is not a Tuesday, that is a following Wednesday, uh, the twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, last meeting of the year at nine o'clock here in the Carls County Historic Courtroom at one oh one North Panaria Avenue, Suite two hundred, Carls City, Texas. All right, I'll see everybody after Christmas, have a blessed Christmas, remember, price is a reason for Christmas, remember price, the reason, Merry Christmas to all of you and your families, be safe, be well, and we will see y'all after Christmas. Item number twenty-nine, adjourn.